Good evening, everyone. It is 7:01. I will be calling the... What month is this? Thank you. The May. Cranston City Council meeting's order. Clerk, please take the roll.
Councilman Lee.
Here.
Councilman Hopkins.
Here.
Councilman Cole.
Here.
President.
President. Here. Uh, President. Everyone, please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, with which we stand as one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Under public acknowledgements and commendations. Now, we have a proclamation honoring the Memorial Day sequential at Rhode Island Department, Sons of Union Veterans of the Civil War, Governors Alicia Dyer, Camp Number Seven. Don't believe anyone is here from that, so we will have that proclamation delivered to them posthaste. Public hearings. Anyone from the public to speak on any docketed items on the agenda, please come to the podium at this time. There being none, I will close the public hearings. Resolutions? There are no resolutions. We will move on to a report of committees. Safety Services Committee, Councilman Joe Aljoloskis.
Mr. Council President, we have one item for the Safety Services and Licensing Committee Agenda 3-1801, Ordinance Amendment of Section 5.04.070 of the Code of City of Cranston 2005 entitled "Licenses Generally," Safety Services Committee sponsored by Councilman Arquette. Motion to approve.
Second. I have a motion and a second, under discussion. Seeing none, clerk, please take the roll.
Councilman Lee.
Yes.
Councilman Hopkins.
Yes.
Councilman Sekos.
Yes.
Councilman Cole.
Yes.
Councilman Poploskis.
Yes.
Councilman Fricke.
Yes.
Councilman Poploskis.
Yes.
Through the chair.
Yes, Madam Clerk.
I would solicit an amendment to the council regarding possible amendments to that, especially with regard to the maximum fine. I think the chair, if the sponsor wanted to make those... I thought he did, that's why I'm raising it.
We can make a family amendment to that, Mr. President?
I believe we'd have to make a motion to reconsider, get it back before it's amended, and then pass it again.
All right. Motion to reconsider.
Motion to reconsider. Second. Under discussion, seeing none, clerk, please take the roll.
Councilman McCall.
Yes.
Councilman Hopkins.
Yes.
Councilman Sekos.
Yes.
Councilman Cole.
Yes.
Councilman McCall.
Yes.
Councilman Poploskis.
Yes.
Councilman Fricke.
Yes. Yes. Councilman Arquette.
Thank you. I'll explain the amendments. I think line 28, they're using Title V. Line 39, Title V. Line 40, or other entity. And then the last one would be 43, unless otherwise specified by ordinance or by statute. I would make a recommendation to vote those amendments out of the block.
Second. I have a motion to vote those amendments out of the block and a second. Under discussion. Seeing none, clerk, please take the roll.
Councilman Lee.
Yes.
Councilman Hopkins.
Yes.
Councilman Sekos.
Yes.
Councilman Cole.
Yes.
Councilman Poploskis.
Yes.
Councilman Fricke.
Yes. Yes.
Now, on the ordinance has amended, move passage.
Second. I have a motion, second. A motion as amended, Councilman Sekos.
Clerk, someone explain the amendments. I'll defer to the clerk.
The two...well, the Title V is just housekeeping, but in looking over the ordinance, if the committee is going to start taking jurisdiction of violations, then one of the situations, they're not always license holders. Sometimes it's someone who's operating and has never had a license. So I added the language, or other entity, to cover that scenario. The last amendment, unless otherwise specified by ordinance or statute, has to do with the maximum fine, because in this city code currently, we have several different sections which have a fine that exceeds that $500. So for tobacco, if like an offense is $1,000, a lot of liquor violations are also $1,000. So that $500 would apply when there isn't another specified in a particular section.
Uh, thank you, and thank you for catching the or other entity, because that has been a problem.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Councilman Sekos, is that short enough for you? Any further discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please take the roll on the motion as amended.
Councilman Lee.
Yes.
Councilman Hopkins.
Yes.
Councilman Sekos.
Yes.
Councilman Cole.
Yes.
Councilman Poploskis.
Yes.
Councilman Fricke.
Yes. Yes. Moving on to the Finance Committee, Council Vice President Favecchio.
Thank you, Council President. We had a resolution authorizing real estate tax abatements that are to review, that passed in committee after its passage.
Motion to approve. I have a motion approved, I have a second. I have a motion, a second, under discussion. Seeing none, clerk, please take the roll.
Councilman Lee.
Yes.
Councilman Hopkins.
Yes.
Councilman Sekos.
Yes.
Councilman Cole.
Yes.
Councilman Poploskis.
Yes.
Councilman Fricke.
Yes.
Councilman Poploskis.
Yes.
Next, we have a resolution authorizing motor vehicle tax abatements that also passed unanimously and I urge approval.
I have a motion to approve. I have a motion, I have a second. Motion, a second, under discussion. Seeing none, clerk, please take the roll.
Councilman Lee.
Yes.
Councilman Hopkins.
Yes.
Councilman Sekos.
Yes.
Councilman Cole.
Yes.
Councilman Poploskis.
Yes.
Councilman Fricke.
Yes. Yes. Moving on to the Ordinance Committee, Councilman Poploskis.
Claims? Point of information, claims committee?
Oh, I apologize. Councilman Colford, go through the sentencing claim.
Thank you, Mr. Council President. I'd like to report out that the city claims are printed here in the agenda tonight, and they're here for your reading pleasure, and I will put back to you.
Thank you, Councilman Colford. Councilman Poploskis, the floor is back to you.
Thank you. For ordinance committee, first up, we have 2-1801, ordinance authorizing the city to construct a dog park on Stony Acre Drive, sponsored by Council President Farina and Councilman Poploskis, and this has been withdrawn by the sponsors.
Thank you, Captain. Thank you, Councilman.
So moving on, we have 3-1805, ordinance authorizing the city to enter into a lease agreement with the Hope Alzheimer's Center, sponsored by Mayor Phong.
Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
I have a second. I have a second, under discussion. Seeing none, clerk, please take the roll.
Councilman Lee.
Yes.
Councilman Hopkins.
Yes.
Councilman Sekos.
Yes.
Councilman Cole.
Yes.
Councilman Poploskis.
Yes.
Councilman Fricke.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Moving on, we have 4-1801, ordinance and amendment of Title 8.49 of the Code of City of Cranston 2005 entitled "Foreclosure Requirements for Owner Occupied Residential Properties," sponsored by Councilman Sekos.
Do I have a motion to approve? I have a motion approved, I have a second.
Second.
I have a second, under discussion. Councilman Poploskis, then Councilman Sekos.
Thank you, Mr. Council President. I apologize for why I have a hand up, Councilman Sekos. I missed the committee meeting. Can you just give me a brief rundown of what this ordinance does?
Yes. This ordinance is...mandates that there be mediation before there's a foreclosure on property, and there is currently a state law that governs all this, but it has a sunset provision, and it's due to expire July 1st. It's currently being considered in the legislature, but it's not clear whether it will pass or not. If it does not...if all ordinance passes and the state ordinance does not pass, the state renewal does not pass, then we have an ordinance protecting homeowners from arbitrary foreclosures by banks. If the state law is renewed, then it would take precedence over this ordinance. The other thing this ordinance does is that there was a court case involving...in Providence, involving a provision of Providence's ordinance, which is similar to ours, and it said that as an enforcement, if the bank could not document that there had been mediation, then the recorder of deeds could refuse to record the deeds. And the court found that that was unconstitutional, or certainly it nullified that provision. So this makes an adjustment so that it's consistent with that court's decision also.
Thank you, Councilman Sekos. Councilman Poploskis, then Councilman Colford. I'll defer to Councilman Colford, he hasn't spoken yet. Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Colford.
Thank you, Councilman. Just a quick question for Councilman Sekos, then. How long before the mediation would have to take place? Is that in here? Is there a term in there? I haven't read it in a while, honestly. What do you mean, how long? I think there's a notice, and...so we already have...we do have an ordinance now, and this kind of cleans it up so that it's consistent with the...okay, with the court case. Is it the 45 days, is it? Let's see. So in Section B, line 84, it says, "Said conciliation conference," which is the mediation, "shall be scheduled at a time and place to be determined by the coordinator, but not later than 21 days following the meaning of a notice of intent to foreclose." So within 21 days of the mortgage holder saying, "I'm going to foreclose," then there has to be this conciliation conference headed up by a official conciliator, and the official conciliators are from Rhode Island Housing. Thank you.
Councilman Favecchio.
I've had some experience with these, and I do support this. There's the...the Rhode Island Housing people do a very good job with these. It's also...the bankruptcy court also has a program that acts as a mediator almost, and really pushes the parties to get to a resolution. One of the problems is, without some type of program, either through a court or through mediation, the banks sometimes just never respond, and even with a push, sometimes they drag these things out for years, even on short sales, and there are a number of programs available to people, so...but I do think it's a good program to continue. It kind of brings some of those lenders into our backyard, so we can deal with them. Otherwise, you may never find them. So I support this.
Councilman Poploskis.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Council President. I just want to thank Councilman Sekos for taking the time to put this in. It's a very important piece of legislation. I hope the General Assembly does pass it, because I think it's definitely needed. If you don't mind, I'd like to become a co-sponsor on this with you. And how do we get notice? One more question. How do we get notice out to the lenders that this will be law in our city if it passes tonight? Because I'd like to make sure that none of the banks or anybody slips through the cracks.
Well, I could probably answer that.
Councilman President.
I don't think we need to. They follow the laws, because if they didn't, they could get...they would be voided. I mean, there have been many cases where thousands of foreclosures have been voided by the courts, so I don't think they're going to dare go against a city ordinance as well as any state law that passes. Providence tested them on this, so I don't think we're protected.
Councilman Lady, as you hand up.
Yeah, I'd like to be a co-sponsor also.
Councilman Arquette.
Information, Mr. President. I don't believe it becomes law until the mayor signs it or leaves it on his desk for a number of days, and so...
Do I have to wait on that a bit, Councilman? No. Councilman Sekos.
Yeah, I just wanted to add a note to what Councilman Favecchio said, and that is, there was an article in the Providence Journal saying that 679 foreclosures were avoided because of this process statewide, not just in Cranston.
Thank you. Just from the committee meeting, to refresh the council, we did have one question that we asked the solicitor. I think we were all in support of this legislation, but the question was, can the city law, if the state law doesn't pass, supersede state law? Because the state typically handles the mortgage laws when it comes to banking, that we can pass isn't having the books, but just to make sure it's enforceable. So, Sussor Lawson, I don't know if you had an opinion on this, just to...you know, I think it's going to pass tonight, and I know, which is great, I just want to kind of think about clairvoyancy. If for some reason the state doesn't pass this, can we use this as a method to help?
Yeah, I think it would be enforceable. I don't think either one would supersede the other. I think it would rule. I also...I mean, I don't know if anyone's way in on that, but I don't think there would be a superseding by the state. If the state has not spoken, our ordinance would rule.
Okay, I just...thank you. I appreciate that, counsel, that's why we have you in the room. With that being said, any further discussion? Clerk, please take the roll.
Councilman Lee.
Yes.
Councilman Hopkins.
Yes.
Councilman Sekos.
Yes.
Councilman Cole.
Yes.
Councilman Poploskis.
Yes.
Councilman Fricke.
Yes. Yes.
Okay, moving on, we have 4-1802, ordinance amendment of Title 8.44 of the Code of City of Cranston 2005 entitled "Health and Safety: Smoking Enforcement and Amended Definitions," sponsored by Councilman Hopkins, co-sponsored by Councilman Sekos, Council President Farina, Council Vice President Favecchio, Councilman Lee, Councilman Arquette, and Councilman McCollough.
Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
I have a second?
Second.
Under discussion. Councilman Poploskis.
Could I be added as a co-sponsor, please?
Let's go 9-0. Any further discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please take the roll.
Councilman Lee.
Yes.
Councilman Hopkins.
Yes.
Councilman Sekos.
Yes.
Councilman Cole.
Yes.
Councilman Poploskis.
Yes.
Councilman Fricke.
Yes.
Councilman Fricke.
Yes. Yes.
Council President, I have one other official...I don't know if it's good under ordinance. It was something that we had that was dismissed, could either go here or under Council Member Communications, but I wanted to move to reconsider one issue just for discussion purposes for another...for a later date, but this would be on the signage issue that came up in committee, and I'd just like to reconsider it just briefly to discuss something as far as how it's going to proceed.
So you want to make a motion to reconsider the application from the ordinance committee?
Yes.
I can second that, I'm on the ordinance.
I have a second, but before I do, to the solicitor or my solicitor, it's not in the docket, is that germane to discussion? Can we do that tonight?
Well, I think there shouldn't be any discussion, but the motion to reconsider can be...
So we'll make a motion to reconsider to refer to next month's ordinance committee for discussion.
Correct.
Okay, so we will make a...Councilman Sekos, you have a question?
Yeah, I don't think you can make a motion to reconsider unless the issue is being brought up and discussed at the meeting that you're making the motion to reconsider.
I had a similar idea, that it's not in the docket.
Right, and it's not a way of saying more years ago.
It would go back on the ordinance docket, and at that point, someone would make a motion to reconsider at the ordinance meeting after it's advertised on ordinance. I think to the solicitors, that's the proper process.
What is that? Consideration?
It wasn't on the docket.
Yeah.
You just put it on the ordinance.
Okay, so we will put this on the ordinance committee for advertising, and at that point, if you still feel strong in making motion to reconsider, you can make it at the ordinance committee, and then we can bring it up for a discussion. Councilman Sekos, does that know you understand how it works?
Um, no. I don't think you can...
It hasn't been reintroduced, correct?
I would think so, yes. You've got to start from zero. You can't reconsider.
You can't start from zero.
Right.
Yeah, I know. Attorney, first of all, can I get your opinion?
No.
I don't want to break any rules.
Not to...
Not to under-harm the business, but...
A motion to reconsider is generally brought by someone who was in the prevailing party at the time that the motion was passed, and wishes to re-argue the motion, introduce more things to the motion that was successfully passed, so in this case, it just died, so I think we'd have to start from scratch, from introduction. It's not on today's docket for introduction. We had clear guidance from the Secretary of State, maybe a couple of years ago, Maria, that all items for introduction had to be on the docket no later than 48 hours in advance of the meeting, I believe. So all new business had to be on that docket, and it's not on the docket. To me, you could...you know, if there's some urgency to this, you could put it on, you could advertise it in some other manner, if you wanted to, for the ordinance meeting, if there was enough time, if you wanted to go through that expense, so you could just introduce it next month. Find my way in.
So Councilman President Favecchio, I think...
Yeah, I don't have a problem with, you know, having it introduced at the ordinance committee. My only procedural issue, I'm just wondering, it's something that was heard, usually it's reported out on the docket as not, you know, not prevailing.
Recommendation, right.
Right. Well, it was, yeah, it was denied in committee, so I don't know that it's a...hasn't...isn't really docketed, because it was heard. I don't know if you were here, Councilman Sekos, but it doesn't matter either way, because it's going to go back to ordinance, so whether it comes in as a new issue or not, I guess it doesn't really matter. But just as a practical matter, I'm just not sure what we've done in the past in that situation, so...because otherwise, you would never be able to reconsider anything, I would imagine.
I'm going to err on the side of the clerk and my attorney that it's not on tonight's docket. Us even having this discussion about it could be a potential violation of what means of laws, because it was not advertised, so with that, I'm going to move on from this subject. Councilman Arquette, do you have something on the...not on the reconsider, but on the process?
On the process.
Excuse me, I don't want to...
On the process, Mr. President. I just want to second agree with Councilman Sekos, the motion to reconsider must be done in that timeframe of that meeting. However, Councilman Favecchio does have a point about bills being reported out of committee that I failed at my recommendation, but it's not on the agenda, Councilman, so that's where we air it.
Right, that's correct.
So basically, my recollection, there was a bill that was submitted for the last nine months by Councilman Lee, so it just can be resubmitted and start from scratch again the next one's meeting, or it could be done for consideration at your discretion, if you'd like to hold it for council, at your discretion. I just thought of mentioning that. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Moving on, Public Works Committee, Councilman Hopkins.
Thank you, President. We have one item, a resolution authorizing the street name change from Marion Avenue to Marion Avenue South, and this has been passed unanimously in committee.
Motion to approve. Second. I have a motion and a second, under discussion. Seeing none, clerk, please take the roll. Yes.
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 Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Public hearings. It's a section of the meeting open to anything you'd like to discuss, anyone with any comments they'd like to make to the Cranston City Council, now is the time to do it. As per usual, name and address to the record.
Pauline DeRosa, 97 Cypress Drive.
Good evening, Pauline.
Good evening. Good evening, President, Council Farina, and good evening, council members. This will be my third appeal to the council members to consider a resolution to generate an electronic document entitled "A Citizen's Guide to the Land Development Process." My last request was on September 25th, 2017, at which time copies of the document of the same name from the town of Richmond were distributed to the council members. At that time, President Farina gave me hope that there would be mention of this document on the docket at the next city council meeting in October. Unfortunately, October came and went with no mention of my request. Notification of the existence of such a document could be posted on the homepage of the city's website for public use, in conjunction with the City of Cranston's comprehensive plan with a link bringing the user to the appropriate page where the document could be located and reviewed. How many residents are aware of what the process is? What steps can be taken when they receive a letter of notification? Who makes land use decisions? What is the role of the zoning board review? Who are the members of the planning commission, and what is their role? These are just a few of the questions that can be addressed in the document I propose. In the scheme of things, the creation of such a document may not be on the list of priorities for the city. However, it is crucial that the city provide every means possible to all of its residents so that they can become better acquainted with their local government and become engaged in the process. It would also be yet another tool to help promote open city government. I ask once again that the city council please take this request under consideration. I would also like to point out that the city's website is in critical need of a comprehensive upgrade. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Pauline. As a point of information, I had to discuss this with the administration a few months ago, with Peter Lopola leaving his role, and then the new planning director coming in. He has to kind of get his bearings first before we have him write up this task, because the one from Central Falls is a little different. We have a little different roles here in the City of Cranston, so he kind of has to take that and rewrite it.
Okay, thank you.
And yes, to echo what Council President Farina said, we have talked about this, we are committed to this, we think it's a fabulous idea. We had not only Director Lopola retire, but we also had Lynn Ferney retire, so for a time there was just Jason alone, and we have since hired one person, we're in the process of hiring a second. So we had to prioritize current projects, unfortunately, but we all are on board, that we think that's a great idea for transparency, and really, if you don't know government and you're starting from scratch on even wanting to start a small business, or develop, you can go to our Economic Development Department, but it'd be nice for people to understand the whole planning and zoning process, and for neighbors to understand when they get a notification, for example, in the mail, you know, that your neighbor's planning on building something, or how do you know what that means? So we all concur. We're with you on this, just patience, but we're there, we're with you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the council, John Nancy, on behalf of BCP Store Development LLC. BCP Store Development LLC is the applicant that submitted the application for 950 Phoenix Avenue, which was before the ordinance committee. And the purpose for that application was to seek an amendment to the existing zone change that the council approved back in 2015, 2014 concerning the development of 950 Phoenix Avenue. We were on the ordinance committee, and well, before the ordinance committee, before a vote, the ordinance was submitted to the ordinance committee. The ordinance committee voted not to make a recommendation or not to proceed with the application. Why the application dies and the council doesn't have an opportunity, the full council Why the application dies and the council doesn't have an opportunity, the full council doesn't have an opportunity to review the application, we really question that, the purpose, the process, it's due process, we're a little bit mystified by why we wouldn't be permitted to proceed and at least have the full council consider the amendment and consider the application, especially given the fact that the development that has taken place, that the property has to date expended over $10 million. It's a large development, one of the largest the city is doing, and it's been done with a great deal of meticulousness, it's gone through a significant process, and all we're asking for is to be given the opportunity to go through the process, the process which would consider the ordinance committee review, the full council review, and also the review of the planning commission. What we're doing is really at the gate of the gate, and we're kind of knocking on the door, asking for process and procedure to be undertaken, and we feel as if we're not getting a full review of the petition that was submitted. The question that was before the ordinance committee was a question of whether or not there was substantial change to the application which was submitted less than two years ago. You have an ordinance which specifically states that whether the applications were drawn or denied, it cannot be resubmitted unless a two-year period has expired. We are just three months shy of the three, of the two-year period, and the reason why this is important, the reason why we, you know, rather not wait three months to obtain a decision, is because the applicant is ready to have its opening. And in fact, the opening was slated in June of this year. The opening is for Cube Smart, which is a public storage company, one of the largest in the country, and the company, the occupant, the developer, would like to get finality with respect to signage, it's an important issue. I think I've said it before, and I repeat myself, when I say that, you know, no sign is a sign of no business, and we really can't afford to do that when the applicant and then occupant has expended so much resources in the City of Cranston in hopes that they can flourish here, and they can do a good job for not only the city, but the, its services, its customers. So we are simply looking for a review. I understand the process, certainly, I appreciate that process more than anybody else, and I respect it fully, but I'm hoping that the council can at minimum allow the petition to be reheared at the ordinance committee. There's no sense in re-filing everything, and no sense in rebooting a project and a process that's already been undertaken, and expenses and resources that have already been spent on it. Certainly, I don't think that's fair to the applicant, and certainly not a message you want to send to a business community. So I hope the council will reconsider, at minimum, providing the application to proceed at the ordinance committee, so that debate can be segwayed if there's an issue for reconsideration. And I thank you for your time, Mr. President.
Thank you. Anyone in public want to speak? There being none, that's a section of the meeting, and now we'll, the election of city officials. Juvenile Hearing Board. Pamela Schiff, appointment as the member number three to fill unexpired term of Mary Jo Hind, which ends 12/1/2018, sponsored by me.
Motion to appoint.
I have motion to appoint, I have a second. Under discussion. Seeing none, clerk, please take a roll.
Yes.
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 Congratulations.
Thank you.
There was a correction on the docket. We appointed Judy Abate in March to the, to basically reappoint her as an alternate. In the time while she was an alternate, she was appointed to be a full member, so we did that in error. We currently have two open alternates on the juvenile hearing board, so if anyone has people they'd like to submit, we'd be looking to get them. Councilman Stikus.
Yes, I indicated I had someone, but that person decided not to do it, so, but thank you for kind of holding.
You're welcome, Councilman. Okay, Building Appeals Board. John Phillips, reappointed as a member, term set to expire 6/11/2022.
Motion approved.
I have motion to appoint, I have a second, under discussion. Seeing none, clerk, please take a roll.
Yes.
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 Yes. Report of city officials, Director Muskin.
Detective John Nyan has requested to be continued in service. He certainly meets the qualifications to do so, and we thank him for his continued service and his desire to stay working for us.
Motion approved.
Motion approved, and a second, under discussion. Seeing none, clerk, please take a roll.
Councilman.
Yes.
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 The report on hiring special counsel has been distributed to the council in your monthly packet. I'm actually going to hold off my council president communications until later in the meeting, so we'll move on to council member communications and let them handle their business. Councilman Manning, you're on first.
All right, at the last meeting, Mr. Mason indicated that there's still a problem at this particular location, and it's ongoing, but maybe the administration give us some updates on any possible resolution?
Yeah, and I apologize, I apologize, last meeting I was about some confusion as to which street we were looking at, and I think I sent you information for Gardner Street and not Garden Street. So I did talk to Mr. Mason, and the real issue is that it's a design, it's just aging infrastructure, and at this point, what they're doing is a maintenance plan with it, Councilman, it's, the drainage is tougher. It seems that with the increase in awareness of maintenance, we've had less problems, we had a major issue there a few years back. I haven't heard of anything significant since then, so basically, John Corso keeps that on top of his list for maintaining on those storm drains. I think the problem is a permanent solution would require a major rebuild of all the infrastructure underneath there and the drainage systems. It's a challenging spot, and I think at this point, as much as I hate to say it, maintenance is our best bet. We haven't seemed to have any major issues since, even with some heavy rains that have moved through, but it is on their radar, I always watch it, it's one of the primary areas to make sure they clean first. I wish I had a better answer for you.
Thanks. Thank you anyways.
Point of information.
Your, yes, Councilman.
I think this is, you're speaking of Gordon Street.
Well, that was the confusion, because Marlboro doesn't cross Garden, and I think last week I gave you Gordon, last time I gave you Gordon and Marlboro, but I think the question is Garden Street, which is right over here, and that was where the confusion came, you're right, not Gardner, it was Gordon. And when I asked about it with Mr. Mason last week, last month, to be prepared, he said, well, no, Garden doesn't cross Marlboro, and you're right, it was Gordon, but you're interested in Garden, right, President, the one right over here, off Park, Councilman?
Correct.
So, yeah, so that's, can I just call, I'm sorry.
It's all right. I did it the second.
Oh, that was diehard. But Garden Street is on a maintenance plan, basically, so.
Okay.
But thanks, Councilman McCall, there was such confusion over the streets, and I apologize because I gave the wrong information to give to Mr. Mason too last month, so, my bad.
Okay. Councilman Stikus.
This isn't on the, isn't on my agenda list, but I just, I don't want to discuss the issue, but concerning what Mr. Mancini had to say, I know we've had, we've kind of gone round and round on zoning issues, and a number of us have been educated that the property owner who wants a zone change has the right to go to the full council, and so if this issue comes up again, I, I and other people as well, will probably want a legal opinion as to whether this falls under the same rules, or if it's somehow different and can own, and can die in the ordinance committee, or if they do have a right to come to the full council. So I think that issue needs to be resolved.
Thank you, Councilman Stikus. I've actually asked Solicitor Kirshenbaum to do some research on that for me, because this is a special circumstance, again, I won't speak about the issue, but the circumstances of it, this is withdrawn, was withdrawn by the applicant within the two-year span, and our charter specifically states, if an applicant withdraws something, he has to wait, he or she has to wait two years before they can put it back in file. This applicant is asking us to override the charter and hear it, so we met that ordinance, and the decision was that it was not substantially different, so we're not going to override the charter. That being said, I've asked Solicitor Kirshenbaum to go back, look at this scenario, because this isn't something that is before the council, the decision was made that it was the same basic ask that was withdrawn by the applicant two years ago. So I've asked Solicitor Kirshenbaum to work with Solicitor Lawson, and just, because this is an oddball circumstance, to look at how we resolve this for the applicants, so we're not being anti-applicant, but we're not totally ignoring the charter and not sticking by the two-year commitment if somebody withdraws it.
Okay, thank you. The other issues are on the agenda. During the budget, we had discussions about the ice rink and the fact that it is a $700,000 to $900,000 operation per year that is not in the city budget, and I think that it should be in the city budget. There was a vote, and the full council did not agree with that opinion, but my view is that it cannot be out of the city budget unless the council voted to somehow do that, and I would like to see that, that proof, and if the proof is not available, then I think there has to be a recognition that it belongs in the budget.
So through the chair, you would like someone from the administration to dig up the old vote that put it as its separate fund?
Yes.
Just a.
For Director Strom, but it goes back, as far back as I can go back before 2003, when I first came, it's always been separate, so I don't even know, do you know how far back that goes?
Well, just to address Councilman Stikus, I know that we had three management companies of five-year contracts, going back for 15 years, and each one of those ended up always not generating a profit for the city. In fact, we were stuck, when we came on board in 2009, we were stuck paying some of these expenditures that, when that company's lease was up. Since we took over the last four years, we've generated about $190,000 in profits for over four years. This year, I projected, and I have copies, where I projected about $85,000 for this year through May, the end of May. We've put in a lot of money into the rink, both the bubble and also the main rink. There's more money that needs to be done, I'm first to admit that, but it's self-sustaining, and it's basically like an enterprise fund, and what we could do, if the council feels more comfortable, excuse me, we can list it almost like the sewer fund in the budget with revenues and expenditures, but I don't think it should be part of the general fund. I think it should be on its own and function that way based on the revenues that we bring in and the expenditures that we generate, because that's all the sewer's handled.
I still, I think we have to know legally where we are now before we decide where we're going to go, and so I would still request the, and again, I'm not questioning the quality of the management of the rink, but the fact that it is obscured from the public, and at least as I look at it, in violation of the way that our city government is supposed to operate with separation of powers of the budget being approved by the council and spending approved by the council.
Through President Verena, I'm certainly happy to look into the history of it, and I think it goes back to when it was first privatized, but that's what happened, it became separate from the budget because there was a lease agreement. In effect, once those all ended and the city took it back, it sort of functioned in the same way, but I think I get a little concerned when the word obscured is used, because this is a little bit different, with all due respect to Director Strom, he's right, it's acts like an enterprise fund, the difference is that the sewer, people pay taxes, but like the ice rink, it's a user fee. So only people who use it pay for it. In this case, no tax dollar from the general fund and no tax money goes into it. It's running like a private entity in the sense that the only people who pay to sustain it are people who use it. So in this case, it's not even a tax, it's simply, I want to join a league, I want to go get free ice time. Happy to look into the history and try to dig up the minutes of when it first got privatized, which would be, you know, I think that might answer your question, Councilman, to find out when that was allowed, because once it went into a private lease agreement, whatever council voted on that was effectively voting for it to not be listed as a regular general fund item.
I would question that. I mean, anytime the city goes into a lease, that information doesn't go off the, off the books.
No, I agree, but you don't see it on a general ledger, it's a private lease, and you could get that information from the private company, but anything we were to privately lease, you wouldn't look through our budget and see that lease, you wouldn't look through the budget and see all the line items for that particular operation any different. We're happy to produce whatever expenditures and revenues through all of it, anytime. Yeah, and Bob has those. So, I mean, it's not that we would ever obscure it, it's just that to incorporate it back into the general fund, if you're looking simply for the legal history of when it left the general fund, we can dig that up, and that would go back to when it was first privatized.
I'm not looking for just when it left, I'm looking for how it, how it left, and if there is, if it is established as an enterprise fund or whatever, I want to see that, and then based on that information, I think the council can decide what it wants to do from there.
Thank you, Councilman Stikus. I think the administration knows that they have to look up some history, and I'm sure once the lawyers see the history of how it was done, they can probably give us an opinion on what would happen. So, so you got it? Director Strom?
Yeah, Councilman Stikus, also, I just want you to know that when we did have those five-year lease agreements with the three different entities that took over, basically, they reined the rink and incurred all the expenditures, all we received was rent from them, so it was handled a little differently than what we're doing now. Now we incur all the expenditures through that fund, and we also generate the revenues through that fund, so it's a little different.
I recognize that it's different, but now we have city employees, you know, running the rink and.
Right, well, yes, we do.
Right.
Most of them, I just want you to know they're part-time.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Arco, you have something to add?
I just want to pick up where Councilman Stikus left off on the ice rink. Is that okay? I just, through the chair, Mr. Strom.
Yes.
Look for the record, Mr. Strom, what's in the account for the ice rink at this time?
Just as of today, we have $165,000.
Okay, $165,000. And in the testimony at the last meeting was that you do send out information based upon the operation of the ice rink, is that correct?
That is correct. In the monthly funding package under the trial balance and the Fund 380, it shows revenues, expenditures, cash balance, and surplus.
Okay, in that account, that's not part of the general fund, so it's, is it a quasi-account? But what is it titled or labeled? Does it have a category or label for that account?
It's a restricted fund, that's part of the total.
So it's a restricted fund, the city council did not create, did the executive branch create that fund?
Point of information, this happened 19 years ago, so we're not sure if the private council created it, didn't create it, the administration created it, didn't create it, this happened, what, if any of us run a.
We researched how it was created, okay, that's good news for me, but one point I'd like to make, regardless whether tax dollars involved or not, if it's part of the operation of the city council, which it is, the legislative branch has the auspices of all revenue and all expenditure, not the executive branch, not the treasurer of the city. Everything must be though through the city council, but that's part of government and separation of powers, I mean, that's basic. So I think we need to address the situation in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Stikus, you have another matter on the docket?
Yes, I'd ask for a report on yard works inspections, yard works on Warwick Avenue, just to let the rest of the council know, the neighbors are quite upset that this business is, claims to be a nursery, but at this location has little or no live plants, it's primarily a trucking depot, and they store junk that they, you know, concrete and debris that they produce on their jobs, and they also have things like loam and sand there, and the movement of those materials with the equipment, with those backup beepers, makes a lot of noise, very close to residents' homes, and they're quite upset about it.
Director.
Yeah, I'm going to be a little cautious in my remarks, Councilman, only because one of the particular neighbors has indicated legal action, and has been in touch with Mr. Lawson, so I have to be a little bit cautious, but what I can tell you is, is that first of all, I originally did get a call from a neighbor complaining that we're working on Saturdays, for example, and very loud. We did spend, set inspections out, we nicely asked within, because remember, noise is not really restricted except for the decibel thing after 10 o'clock, so we're kind of, noise is very tough for us to enforce. We did go out, we did ask, they tried to be a little more courteous to the neighbors because we. because we agreed that that was problematic. I believe that the last few Saturdays have been better. Our building official has been out there several times. They are not doing anything that is, we have read it, and again, I want to be cautious, there are state statutes that govern farms and nurseries. Through some recent lobbying from large nurseries around the state, nurseries have been included in many ways in, under the umbrella of farm protection. To be able to operate with a lot more latitude, the goal of the state is, of course, to preserve farms and allow farms to operate. Nurseries have managed to sort of work their way into that. The challenge is that some nurseries are more isolated than others, and the definition of nursery is one that we really, it's governed by the state. And again, I want to be careful because of the potential liability issues for the city on this. We talk to D E M, we work with the state, we are trying to address this as best as we can. Our hands are a bit constricted by the law, by how we're interpreting state statute, and we have to be very careful of that. We do not disagree, however, Councilman, that it is a problem. It's, certainly, there's a lot of noise. I look at that and I say, is that really a nursery, or is that something else? But I'm not the state, and I don't define the statutes. So again, we are continuing to work on it. I want to be somewhat cautious about what I say, just because I don't want to put the city in a liable situation. But we have not stopped, and even if we can't cite or find, we are continuing to make visits out there, make friendly requests if we can, as best as we can, to let them know that we are sort of watching this, asking them to be good neighbors, pushing as hard as we can within our legal rights. If in our discussions with D E M, and I know D E M has been out there, and if there are issues, I'm certain D E M will cite them because there are regulations on what can be dumped and where, we will be fully supportive of anything that D E M says or does on this. We are happy to stand with the state on this if they stand up on it as well.
The only comment I'd make is that this has been going on for years, at least eight from when I started as a councilman. And I had a meeting with Mr. Rawson, and I think you remember, people from the police department, and it doesn't get resolved. And so I think there needs to be a good look at this, and if the neighbors don't have a leg to stand on, then they need to be told that. And otherwise, yard works needs to be told to behave better. But I think this kind of going and asking them to be nice doesn't work. And I, it doesn't work with that company, because I've called them, and they don't return my calls. I remember Jerry Cordy called them, they didn't return his calls. So they're very difficult to work with.
I don't disagree. We, as I said, we had a little bit of success of at least getting them to stop the Saturday noise, for at least a few weeks ago, I know they had, I don't know about this past weekend. I don't disagree with you at all, Councilman, and we're doing what we can, what we believe is within our latitude. We have, and again, I have to be careful what I've said to the neighbors, because one of those neighbors has indicated legal action. But we have indicated to the neighbors that we believe they need to work with the state reps and state senators on this. I'm getting the feeling that the reps and senators are kicking it back to the city. But I can't, we can't cite based on state statute, you know, based, our building inspector can't give them a city violation when state statute is in conflict with that. So that's what we're battling with. It's not off our radar. Solicitor Rawson continues to work on it. I don't disagree that it's a problem. I don't think that this is necessarily the unreasonable neighbors, but I also am confined by that balance I have. But again, I just have to be careful.
Well, another approach would be to, if, position of the city is that we can't do anything about this, then I think we need to look about, under current ordinances, we need to look at how this type of problem could be addressed elsewhere.
Absolutely willing to work with you all on this. I think, again, what I'd say is, a lot of what it's going to come down to is the definition of nursery and the protection that they have under the word farm. And that may be a challenge for us moving forward on trying to adjust this, but I absolutely have no problem with us all working together on this. It is a concern.
Thank you.
Thank you, Director. Councilwoman Vice President Vivek, do you have a comment on this?
Yeah, just, not on this, something else before...
So let's do Councilman Arquette, because he's on the docket. He called us in.
Are you sure? No, no, this is... I didn't know if you would abandon your, what you had on the docket.
Thank you, Council President. Our last meeting, my bill about surveillance cameras, I did some research, I was on the internet, and I just want to read a couple of things into the record, if that's okay. Because this is a very new frontier for everyone, and so many people nowadays are putting cameras up in their back yards for security, but also infringing upon their neighbors and the neighbors' right to privacy. If anyone sees cameras as an infringement on the Fourth Amendment, calls guarding individuals from unreasonable searches and seizures. In Florida passed a law that ties creative penalties to hidden videotaping of individuals anywhere they have a reasonable expectation of privacy, such as their home, their bathroom, or the backyard pool. It is considered an aggravated offense to record anyone in a place where the individual has an expectation of privacy without their prior consent. Installation or use of any device for photographing, observing, or hearing events sounds in a private place without the permission of the people photographed or observed is against the law. A private place is one where a person may reasonably expect to be safe from unauthorized surveillance. Some states do prohibit the use of heavy surveillance cameras that also capture audio. This means that a surveillance tape would literally not be able to be used in a court prosecution. Directing cameras inside the neighbor's home presents a different story. The law normally treats the inside of a home as violent. As a result, your neighbors or their guests possess a reasonable expectation of privacy inside their home, monitoring what happens in another's home exposes you to criminal prosecution. These types of statutes typically make it, it requires video cameras and other devices to record or observe a person without their consent, where the person is not employed near the public, such as a backyard pool, an offense. In California, you'd need a trespasser if you employ the home security camera to obtain or record images of family, personal, or private activity, if you couldn't view it without physically entering the premises. Everything I've read to Council President and the council is my tenth on the ordinance that I've submitted. I think we need some restrictions. I think whenever you see the phone calls, that people have been putting cameras on top of flagpoles, or a man who lives over in the neighborhood, four or six has four cameras on top of flagpoles over 37. I think we need to be on the forefront of this, and start to look at how we can restrict the use of these surveillance cameras. That's all. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you. Anyone else have any business to come before the council? Councilman Vice President Vivek?
Thank you, Council President. Just to intercede for a minute, just wanted to do an update on the safety committee. I've been working on the report. It has taken a while, but obviously, the budget got in the way. We had so many meetings on the budget. And I'm just going to get some more input from some of the people who spoke and the members of that committee, and we should have a report by next month's meeting. So that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you, Council Vice President. Councilman McCollough?
Thank you, Council President. I'll take just a moment. Director Muskin, you don't have to get up. I'll meet with you if I may, and also with Director Zarella. I'm really having problems with overnight parking, especially in the Eden Park neighborhood, and some street issues, Marine Street and things of that. So I just wanted to go on record to say that I'm working on it. So if the public that's been calling me, is watching this down the road, they'll know that I'm trying to get it fixed, so, thank you.
Councilman Arquette?
Through the administration, do we have a schedule for the street sweepers? Do we know where they are? I haven't seen them in the way that they have in...
I can get you a schedule. I'll get you an update. I talked to John this morning, he said they're actively out there sweeping, I'm just not sure where they are.
Yeah, I see.
Yeah, I'll see, I'll get you a schedule. I know we usually plan on trying to end the first week or so, June we usually finish, but April, we had snow and sand coming down in April, so...
Thank you. Any additional council member communications? Councilman Colford, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Council President. If I could approach the podium?
You may.
This is to the Honorable Mayor Fong, the administration directors, Council President Farina, Council Vice President Vivek, Council Majority Leader Paplaskas, Councilman Hopkins, Council Mayor Leader Arquette, Councilman Lee, Councilman McCollough, and Councilman Styches. It is great mixed emotions that I will be turning my resignation to this great body effective June 6, 2018, the year of our Lord. It has been my greatest honor serving our constituents and Lord's floor and the citizens of the city of Cranston. I hope you indulge me just for a moment, as I take the opportunity to explain and thank everyone. You know, life, there are moments where we all have to make big life-changing decisions. For my wife Lynn and I and our children Hunter and Trent, this is one of those moments. We have made the decision to start to prepare for our next phase in life, and part of that will be leaving this great city that we love. We made the decision to move here a little 15 years ago, as I think a lot of parents do, to try and give our children the best education and opportunity possible. And we felt that Cranston was that place. Lynn had grown up here, has lived here almost her entire life. She's a proud graduate of Cranston West, class of 1882. Both of our children have gone through the Cranston public school system. Our daughter Hunter graduated in 2014, and our son Trent in 2015. They both received a great education experience through our great schools. My journey here to these council chambers with my colleagues is proudly very similar to many individuals who have served this city in the past and will in the future. I've always been very passionate about politics and a concerned citizen. After volunteer coaching over 40 different youth sports teams for more than a decade, I decided to get more involved in the politics of the city. I was encouraged by some fans, Gary Vier, Alan Fong, Mike Ripazera, Mark Collins, and many others, to run for office. After watching how we handled the poor beginners that rest and the poor financial situation our school system budget was in, with the millions of dollars of deficit and the millions and millions of unfunded liability to the school's pension system, and then through all of that, our inability to find $133,000 for kids' middle school sports, I felt I needed to get involved. You know, I say all the time, I'm just a handover guy. I started doing this business as a teenager 40 years ago, and I've never left. Now I fast-forward here, here we are, voted in the top 50 cities in America to live in. We have a great affordable budget with a valuable surplus to help our financial position. Businesses are moving into Cranston all the time, and we just passed Warwick as the second largest city in the state of Ireland. All this helps our tax base and keeps our property taxes lower, which gives us the ability to repair roads and reinvest in our school buildings and facilities that have been neglected for far too long. Mayor Fong's leadership, along with this council, have shown clearly what fiscal responsibility can do to improve a city. Why we would ever want to veer off that path makes no sense to me. You know, they say our politics is local, and I have certainly mean that over the last six years or so. As a citizen, we all have a responsibility to give back in some small way. It may just mean being aware and up to date on what our local government is doing. It may be how we feel about the job they're doing for us. But we need to always remember that this great nation was founded on Judeo-Christian values, and that the Constitution was meant to ensure that we remain a country run by the people and for the people. We have sworn an oath to uphold that Constitution, not to try and circumvent it by means we see fit. We are a nation of laws, and we need to follow those laws and not pick and choose the means we will and will not follow, or else we cease to be a nation. It is not by accident that our founding fathers put the amendment to murder that they did. Number one, the first, our freedom of speech does not mean we have the right to speak freely only if you agree with what the other person is saying. And if you don't agree, then we will censor you and your speech, even if we have to take that right away, from one word at a time. Number two, Second Amendment, the right to bear arms, not muskets, but arms. Because the founding fathers knew that human nature would eventually drive individuals to try and take over this great nation and control all individuals, and that the only deterrent to protect against that tyrannical government would be armed populace. We all want to be safe and free to do as we wish, but if we give up our freedom in the name of safety, we'll have neither. My challenge for my colleagues is this: continue to do the right things for the citizens of Cranston. Stay fiscally responsible. We have a great city, a great future. My family and I have loved that time here, and will always be Cranstonians at heart. Thank you for letting me serve this city, and for allowing me this opportunity to speak tonight. Sincerely, thank you.
Council member communications. All I can say, Councilman Colford, it has been an honor to serve with you. Honored to call you, my friend. We will miss you.
Thank you as well. Thank you, gentlemen.
Matt Clark?
Proposed ordinance 5-1801, an amendment of Title 13.08 under the cover of the city of Cranston, for public services waste water discharge limits. To be referred to Public Works Committee for hearing on June 14. Proposed ordinance 5-1802, authorizing the city to utilize city western Cranston policing factories for police station lease payments. Refer to finance for hearing on June 4. Proposed ordinance 5-1803, authorizing a warrant for the city of Cranston to finance the acquisition, construction, improvement, renovation, repair, alteration, and equipping of playgrounds and athletic fields in the city by the issuance of not more than $2 million bonds and notes therefore. To be referred to the Finance Committee for hearing on June 4. We have quite a number of pole locations, they're all from National Grid. I'm just going to read the number and the location. These are all being referred to Public Works for hearing on June 14. Two new and removal of two joint poles on Park Avenue, east of Wellington and Park. A new and removal on Park Avenue, east of Wellington and Park. A new joint pole location on Pontiac Southwest intersection of Hamilton Road. A new joint pole location and replacements on Chesapeake Hill Avenue. Two new joint pole locations on Layton Night Road, north of Layton Night Road and Hope Road intersections. New joint pole location on Layton Night Road, west of Layton Night Road and Beechwood Drive. A new joint pole location on Hope Road, east of Hope Road and Layton Night Road. The foul and claims have been introduced to be referred to claims for hearing on June 4. The first of the property damage claims, Martha DiMeo, June 17, 2015. Susan Corlanan, January 13, 2018. Mary Arlene Lani, January 14, 2018. Jen Tannen, Shiri Haban, January 30, 2018. David Howley, February 23, 2018. Luke Makler, March 13, 2018. Paul Aldria, March 16, 2018. Joseph Flores, April 1, 2018. Arlen Cavanagh, April 17, 2018. Jesse Revad, April 22, 2018. Diana Dale, April 22, 2018. Gomaldo Paravano, April 25, 2018. Saul Najer Varese, May 4, 2018. David Sylvia, May 8, 2018. Stephen Hung, May 12, 2018. And two person juried claims, Elena Masurani, April 26, 2018. And Pedro and Goamina Montes, May 11, 2018. Manzola Hes.
I want to take a motion to send all the business to the proper committee.
So moved.
Second, I have a motion, second, no discussion.
Seeing him.
Clark, please take the roll.
Yes.
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 There is no miscellaneous business on the clerk's desk. The city council's next regularly monthly schedule meeting will be held on Monday, June twenty-fifth, two thousand and eighteen. However, I will be holding a special council meeting on June eighteenth. It is a Monday. At that time, we will be appointing a replacement for Councilman Colford and allowing him to come back here, so if we have comments to thank him for his service, uh, at that time, we, we would do that. So I know this came tonight, he's officially resigning on the sixth, but I'm sure, uh, at that meeting on the eighteenth, any council members who'd like to, you know, impart words of wisdom to him, we can, we can do that as a body. With that, I will take a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second.
All favor?
Aye.